So that position's been vacant for about a year.
Who's going to take your place?
That will be up to the superintendent. But I just wanted to come and thank you for all the support.
I dated my grandparents.
I know, he says the worst person I ever had in my life, they laugh. And I did that to somebody, one of my employees, and I didn't want her to go. I said, "Oh, she's terrible."
Yeah, right.
So, thank you for our support. Okay, and I'll still be working with you. You're still one of the member districts. I'll be down, I'll get to see everybody every now and then.
Thank you for what you've done. Thank you.
Okay, I don't know how to continue.
It's not your fault, you're on business.
Yeah, you could have voted against it.
I couldn't vote against it. Could not, could not. We have a 1:00 PM handwriting time certain, I think?
We don't need to do that.
Okay.
We're gonna go ahead and let Mike finish what we did because they just couldn't give us the one.
They're all looking at each other. What if I can... Do you guys think, did you want to go 1:00? They're here because we...
They're looking at Ms. Hamel saying, "We're gonna do whatever she says." See?
The 1:00 time certain was that they couldn't be here until 1:00. Not that they had to.
You can just stay around the afternoon.
They said they wanted to. So they gotta follow.
Arm, Mr. Clutter.
Want the video or not?
Absolutely.
Oh, another kid video?
We want the video.
You took your time to learn it all. Your work is hanging on the wall. You answered every call. And now you're on your way. You read it right at your will. Learn new skills and they're real. You didn't know it at first, but now it's a testing day. Your brain is working. Math, science, learning, growing. Reading, writing, your mind is go. Don't you know you're ready, baby? Hey, I'm a third grade. And this is my year. I study hard. I have no fear. And all the teachers, they all taught me. I study hard. I have no fear. Hey, I'm a third grade. And this is my year. I study hard. I have no fear. And all the teachers, they all taught me. I study hard. I have no fear. Before the testing day came, we worked so hard. We worked so hard. We worked so, so hard. Before the testing day came, we worked so hard. And you should know that. We worked so, so hard. And all the teachers, we all taught you. You studied real hard. Now it's testing day. Hey, I'm a third grade. And this is my year. I study hard. I have no fear. And all the teachers, they all taught me. I study hard. I have no fear. Before the testing day came, we worked so hard. We worked so hard. We worked so, so hard. Before the testing day came, we worked so hard. And you should know that. We worked so, so hard.
Thank you, Mr. Clutter.
Thank you, ma'am.
On that note, Mr. Clutter, I wanted to add, I wanted to ask the principals if they had read this article. I've read two articles on the same subject recently that talked about having children write for 10, 15 minutes before their standardized test and write about their anxiety or their stress or their worries. Have you read any of this yet? Anybody read this?
Yes, something, we just got something.
Yeah, and what they found is, once the students wrote it down and they were able to get that anxiety off their chest, then when they actually started doing the test, that anxiety was lifted. So I'm wondering if anybody wants to try that out, see if that really works.
Especially for the next ones.
Yeah, I think it was, I think I read it in both the New York Times and either Newsweek or the American School Board Journal.
They tested today, Ms. Deutschman.
Well, no, this wouldn't be a writing test, but it would be on the...
They've got it.
If I'd find a copy, I'll send it to you.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
I think it's great actually having these principals here this afternoon to see a part of this presentation that's really an extension of our presentation this morning. It was not by accident that we started out our discussion this morning with Common Core and some of, some really strong curriculum focus, kind of as a foundation and as a platform for what I'm going to be sharing with you this afternoon. Because what I'm sharing with you this afternoon, it's not an end in itself, it's a means to an end, helping students be successful, helping support a strong, rigorous, challenging, relevant curriculum. And so that's what we're really talking about with the things that we're talking about this afternoon. I'm going to share, this is the beginning of a discussion, a big discussion. We're going to be talking about some big ideas, we're going to be talking about some expensive ideas, we're going to be talking about where you want to see the Citrus County School District five years from now, what it's going to look like, how we're going to function. And as we start out, one of the things I think we can all agree with, that our world is very, very, very different than the world that we grew up in. I was reflecting the sitting over there, I remember, my dad was kind of interested in the technical things and gadgets and I remember when he came home from Radio Shack with this device that played pong. Remember, it was like two, two things and a little ball bouncing, and we were just playing that for hours, you know, just mesmerized by that. And then I fast forward to the fact that if I get a whim on a weekend, I can pull up my iPad and I can connect with my son's family in Orlando and I can FaceTime my grandchild and see what he's doing. And the screen, big enough on his end, he can recognize us and it's just, it's almost a Jetson world we live in. And if you think about it, think about the conversation we had this morning about cell phones and electronic devices and students. My goodness, when I was a student, I know this reflects on my age, we worried about bringing marbles to school and I remember in high school, we proudly had a slide rule, you know, and that was the technology we carried in our pockets and, you know, we talked about. So, we're having different conversations today than we've ever had before about students and learning because our world's different. And so by logic, the way students learn is different, their needs are different, the way they engage and what interests them is different. And so this, I thought, was a kind of an appropriate quote, this is little John Dewey, "We teach today as we taught yesterday, we rob our children of tomorrow." And the fact is, over the years, we've seen a lot of trends come and go and a lot of cyclical things, if you've been in education long enough, but there's no question, the world we live in demands a different approach in how we engage our students. Now, there's a lot of driving factors that you've heard about this morning already, and I'm just going to, without going into a lot of detail because we've been introduced to them, computer-based testing, digital curriculum. Mr. Clutter pointed out the fact that by 15, 16, 50% of the funds we spend on curriculum have to be in digital format, career readiness. So there's a lot of external, a lot of factors kind of leading us the direction we're going to be discussing this afternoon. And really, students demand and require a different skill set than they did 20 years ago. So now it's creativity, innovation, I think you've seen some of that in some of the videos you just saw, communicate, collaborate, think critically, we're no problem solving, digital citizenship, using technology effectively. And here's our challenge in the midst of all this, and it's what I prefaced my presentation with earlier, our challenge is to facilitate student success by providing relevant, engaging, rigorous learning opportunities. That's what it's about. So, those learning opportunities take on some characteristics and I'm just going to show you those, student-centered, learner-constructed, connected, authentic, real-world, innovative, collaborative, global now. It's amazing that when you can have a group of students in elementary school actually skyping with a soldier in Afghanistan and hearing about those experiences firsthand. Or you can have a class of science students talking face-to-face with a subject matter expert in New York City on genetics, you know, we've had that happen in the school district. So, it's a crazy different environment and it's one that we need to be prepared for. And so, what I'm going to share with you relates to this engaging curriculum, facilitates this transition to digital curriculum, it's big, it's bold, it's the beginning of a discussion. And so here's what we're proposing, another thing I'm sharing with you, if you'll look up here just a moment, is in this 90-page district technology plan that really is the basis of this discussion. We saved some trees, you have this on your USB drives that you were given this morning. I believe it was emailed to you, so you have the most current copy. Mr. Clutter, I believe, has placed it in the Dropbox, is that true, sir?
Yep.
So, you have electronic access to it, we will make you a printed copy if you would like. It's got a lot of detail that I, I'm not going to go into today because it would just be, we'd be here for hours. But I challenge you to look at this very closely, what I'm going to talk to you about is the highlights, or are the highlights. And so basically, we're proposing that we expand Citrus Springs Middle School 1-to-1 initiative to include the 8th grade for the coming year. And so we're suggesting 7th graders keep those devices that are there now for the 7th grade, and then as those students move on to 8th grade, they would have devices. We're proposing expanding the 1-to-1 to the additional, to the other middle schools 7th grade. Piloting a 1-to-1 at an elementary school or high school or multiple elementary and high schools, just depending on how we decide to divvy out resources for 13, 14. This plan accommodates 50% 1-to-1 in our school district by the year 15, 16. And what that aligns with is the fact that we'll be spending half of our curriculum funding on digital content. And then it goes beyond that, then two years later, by the end of June 30th, 2018, basically, we would be a 100% 1-to-1 district. Now, we're going to be talking about all this, big ideas, bold ideas, but this is the overview. The picture or how this district 1-to-1 is actually going to be painted in the district is really open. It's going to consist of mixed technology at this point, so we see tablet computers as well as notebook computers, the what wins, where's, all the details haven't been determined yet, a lot of that will be based on curriculum and driven by curriculum needs. And I just say, the distribution of what goes where first, determined based on curriculum needs. You're basically talking about adding 7,500 devices by the year 2015, 16, and close to 15,000 devices by the year 2017, 18. So it would be unrealistic to expect to do that without some help. And I think if one thing our Citrus Springs Middle School pilot has shown us with the deployment of 300 devices, they're at the edge, they pretty much told me, you know, if we do another grade, we're going to need some help, just the logistics and mechanics of the management side of this is big. So, we're proposing some technology support type positions to help for 14, 15, roughly CS7 on the professional technical scale, and then for 15, 16. And then, this plan is contingent on the buyout of our existing Dell lease, which is due December 13, January 14 timeframe.
What does that mean?
Ma'am?
What does that mean?
That means when we got into this lease, it was a 36-month period, and so, at the end of the 36 months, you have a couple of options. One is to renew the lease, and so that means you take out all the old equipment, bring in all new equipment, and then you're like $2.5 million payments for that period of time. By buying it out, we're making a one-time payment, I think it's like $693,000. I think that's the amount. And then at that point, Ms. Deutschman, we are making the decision to keep those computers and get three or four more years out of them and use them as long as we can without getting into a new lease.
That's all it would take because we paid so much, three, four, three years?
Yes.
Your lease payments have converted to go into your purchase plans.
Isn't that interesting? Three years ago, you had no vision in your head that we would be doing anything else on the desktop computers.
It's, you know, I talked about the change of, you know, the pace of change. You remember John Headley? You know, John only died in 1995, he never saw the internet. It's mind-boggling how quickly. And you know, I think about our kids seeing this, to me, it's like the Jetsons, you know, seeing this video technology on something you hold in the palm of your hand, that's something we, you know, did crazy stuff that we dreamt about, you know, years ago, and it's continuing to cycle that fast. But, anyway, let me explain this implementation scale because it's kind of the big-picture view. And so 13, 14, you see expansion of the iPads to 8th grade, Citrus Springs Middle, 7th grade, all the other middle schools, a pilot, the elementary pilot, the high. And so roughly, that would total about 1,800 devices for those new additions in our district. And you see at the bottom of that column, that would be the Dell lease buyout. And so, if we did that, we're committing then to using those desktop computers another three or four years. And I'm kind of estimating by 2017 to 2018, we would be forced to make a decision. It's kind of like pay me now, pay me later. You can determine not to buy new buses for a period of time, but sooner or later, you're going to have to buy new buses if you continue to use buses, you know, for transportation kind of thing.
So, what are the implications then if we are moving in the direction of a 1-to-1 instead of a desktop for testing? Because testing is going to bring its new challenges for computer use.
That's a very good question, and let me see if this is...
It's 78 pages, I have to say.
No, we're definitely going to talk about that. Here's the world as we view it. We are trying to create a map from where we're at now to where we want to be, and where we want to be hasn't been totally defined yet, it's not 100% clear, so that's one thing. Then if you go to Google Maps now, you can route a map, a map route from point A to point B, sometimes it'll give you two or three ways of getting there. Not only is this not defined, but we have different paths we can use to get there. Right now, the testing requirements as they are and as we understand them requires computer devices. We have written evidence, I guess you would say, that the PARC testing is going to be modified for the tablet-type devices. There's been discussion about modifying other tests like End of Course and some of the other tests we're going to be facing in the tablet format, but it's not, nothing's definite yet, it's just discussion at this point, am I missing another one?
Well, the only thing I would say is that the PARC is actually in contract. The PARCs, the parameters for the PARC, meaning the iPad 2, iOS 6, is actually in contract, so they have to accommodate that. And they have, and their contract states they have to accommodate it through 2019. And so, districts largely are going by those parameters that have been set up. The question of course is EOC, that's a big one for us. How does that correlate to those PARC hardware requirements? And an example for that is the PARC hardware requirements do not allow an iPad Mini, they don't meet the requirements. Basically, an iPad 2 10-inch tablet is the minimum allowable requirement of hardware at this point. And it's probably also the most inexpensive, interestingly enough, compared to a desktop unit or a laptop unit. So of the options, that's also the most affordable, if I recall, from the hardware perspective, guaranteed again in contract through 2019. And I think I provided you with that.
So, we'll talk a little bit more about that, Ms. Deutschman, on the budget, when I show you the budget page. In this overview, you see then by the end of 14, 15, we'd be roughly 25%. Again, it's a combination of, this model that I'm showing you is not just tablets or iPads, it's a combination of about half notebook computers, half tablet devices, iPads. 15, 16, we will be 50%, and then 75% the following year, and then conclusion of 17, 18, roughly 100%. Now, the money piece, you can see on column 1, that is our current year budget, and so roughly, we had a technology-related budget, $3.3 million. So, basically, as big as what I'm describing to you is, on the capital side, it's like $915,000 more than what we spent this year on the capital side. And so roughly, it's $4 million a year on the capital side until you get to 2017, 2018. When you get to that year, we're going to have to decide something about a new computer lease. And then this really fully addresses your question, Ms. Deutschman. I'm convinced, even though we don't know all the answers and all the details, when we get five years out, I think that we'll be able to significantly reduce that new computer lease number because of number one, the capability of tablet devices is going to be more, better. And then number two, the assessments and a lot of the requirements we have, and now currently, computer-based testing, we feel like will be available for tablet-type devices.
The only thing that worries me about tablets is that they upgrade and change by every six months.
That's a...
For a personal computer or desktop, really...
That's a valid point, you know, I mean, I've discussed this with my staff, they're going, what about two years down the road when we purchase under this plan? It's a valid observation, there's no question.
We were talking with the kids in the Kindles, whether they're color or not color, whether they have, you know, Wi-Fi or not, I mean, it's a big difference just from the simple...
Yeah.
But the cost per unit difference between a laptop and a tablet is what?
$500.
It's about twice as much.
Twice as much, huh?
So the problem is, is you could conceivably have two cycles.
It's a good point.
Or twice as many.
Or twice as many, either way. Dr. Gettys, in looking at the capital outlay, in this particular proposal, the Dell lease payment, if I recall previously, and someone maybe from finance can verify this, I believe previously for the five-year capital outlay, we had continued renewing that lease. So there was approximately $2.5 million in there previously.
You're correct, yeah. I think Mr. Walker has said that...
So the only thing that's really different is that's being removed, I'm saying for this board to understand, that's being removed from that Dell lease payment line. And then the 1-to-1 figure has been added in of what that per year cost is, and then of course, the Dell lease buyout, and then your refresh, which I think you've given some explanation to in the 17, 18 year.
I don't know how long you see the colors on your screen, but those items that are in light green are actually existing, they're not new items, new line items, existing items that we have addressed and would continue to be addressing. So you're correct, the 1-to-1 would be new, be shifting dollars really, that we'd be putting toward maybe a computer lease, and then the buyout there in 14.
So what you're really saying is, is that instead of, for example, this coming year and the next years, instead of renewing the Dell lease and refreshing the computers, you're suggesting some of those funds would then be reallocated to implementation of a 1-to-1?
13, 14, the Dell lease will have to be paid, that's the regular, but beyond that, then we could expand those in other areas. One other thing I would mention, there are some other costs associated with implementing hardware on that scale. And so you'll see down below, there are software costs, you know, we've calculated so, so many per iPad, then so many per notebook computer, and then those staffing costs that I mentioned to you, the four-position 14, 15, roughly $140,000, including benefits. And then, if you double that, it would be $280,000 in 15, 16. So, it's a big, it's a big vision, a very big vision. And as I said, this is a kind of a conversation point with that kind of overview, and we're going to have a lot of opportunities to talk about this, I'm sure, but I guess I would open the floor up just to questions, comments, observations.
You calculated the purchase for the teachers, the administrators.
That's been included in it, I guess, ma'am.
What are you hearing about the proposed increases in our budget specifically earmarked for technology and this text?
The details are unclear on that in terms of specifics. I listened to, I think it was...
Yeah, the, at the recent board meeting, they basically, the governor has allotted $100 million. They are basically going to start communicating with the districts as far as what the needs are at the district.
That's it for the entire state, $100 million?
That's, that's what it is, yes.
For next year?
For next year.
Yeah, we had heard from CEO Lee that there was going to be a huge increase, now like $100 million.
Like $480, right?
Something very, very significant, so that it would have a positive impact on every school district. I mean, if it's $100 million plus, we're probably getting like $30,000 of that, really.
So what Dr. Gettys was saying, the details, are they going to then allocate those funds to districts that do not have any type of leg up on the whole wireless or the ones that have actually, you know, taken some initiative? I'm assuming that they're going to basically ask for a plan and then look for a needs assessment in regards to it, and then submit that to the state.
There is, there's discussion now as to, is it going to be a categorical or is it going to be a strict? And that's the huge discussion right now, are they going to force us to spend on X, Y, and Z? Are they going to give us the money and allow us to be able to spend it? But we may be, or ahead of most districts, we don't have to spend all that money on certain things, so that's the big debate right now, is it going to be categorical?
Well, I think it all has linked back to the digital curriculum, digital textbooks, digital, you know, instructional materials, so that you have to provide a way to deliver those. So I think it was more geared towards that, and then also understanding that the testing was going to be shifting to all computer-based, and some districts didn't have enough computers to accommodate that. So I think we'd be meeting those two needs, not just how many computers you have.
Again, I'm sure you have a lot to talk about, but there's a lot of detail on this that supports this overview that we just shared with you. For example, in there, we talk about upgrades we've made to our wireless infrastructure. And so after the end of, by June 30th of this year, come next year, we've only got five elementary schools and Crest and Renaissance left to retrofit with a beautiful wireless, wall-to-wall wireless solution. And so, again, that's foundation to build upon for these 1-to-1 devices. And by the way, that's been completely funded by Race to the Top. And we've got enough remaining in that MOU, MOU forwards call, to extend through our middle, take it from high schools, elementary and middle, high schools and middle to extend it to our elementary. So that's a very positive thing.
So, I believe originally, there was money allocated to do just the secondary through Race to the Top, you're saying that your staff was able to... You're saying that, that your staff was able to be cost-effective enough in the implementation, that we've actually been able to do all three levels?
Yeah, we've been able to do it less expensively than anticipated at those secondary levels, so we're extending that on down to-
Well done.
Thank you. So that's a lot to chew on. Other questions or observations?
You know, I guess the big question is, okay, if this doesn't happen, where does our, where's our district curriculum-wise? Mr. Clark? I know yesterday, some of us were at a teacher's roundtable conversation, and I didn't go to one table that technology, and I don't think it was just because it was me, but the teachers were saying they've got to implement this, but they've got to have tools. So I guess the question is, if we don't have the budget, where does it leave us truly curriculum-wise with meeting the challenges?
Curriculum-wise, that's the, obviously, when we go through an adoption right now, we're actually purchasing it for a hardbound path and a digital path. Those are the, basically, when we go through that and we're just completing the reading and the mathematics, and my, the publishers will always provide the digital content. It's that, do we go to the point where Citrus Springs has showed us is that it actually is embedded into that change and shift in instruction to what, to the level that they have gone?
But if we don't do it, where do we leave, where are our students? If we don't, if we don't move forward with the implementation of a curriculum change, like is being presented here, where does that leave our district?
We're going to have to have a medium in order to which, to deliver that digital content that we're looking down the line at.
And aside from the digital curriculum, because as you taught me well, publishers, they don't always tend to be as forthcoming in the information you need to make decisions.
It's kind of interesting, because we saw a presentation the other day from Discovery Education, which fits in line with this, in that it provides current research, current curriculum, but yet wasn't on the approved list from the state. And I think that you're going to see some changes in regards to the state on how they're going to be handling instructional materials.
And that's a question, because we hear that, we often hear, they're going to give us, you know, they often, it seems like, package it, they're going to give us flexibilities. They're going to give us options. I haven't heard them change their 50% deadline in any of that. I've heard them say they want to give us flexibilities in other areas. That one, I haven't heard changed. Have you heard?
No, I have not. There's a lot of flexibility that they talk about, even to the point where districts can decide and approve without states, that the state actually go, the state will actually go through their adoption or approval process, but not to the point that it had been before. Again, that's just up for discussion in this legislation coming up.
How long does it take, are we seeing, for curriculum to get developed like at Citrus Springs? And how long do you think it would take for our teachers to go through a transition where they're really able to provide students with the level of instruction, integrated instruction? Am I asking that question fairly well?
No, I think I understand just how long, I mean, they're still in the process of making that shift. And it's basically what areas do they, of the curriculum, are they actually doing? And you've seen that as far as the apps that they're pulling and the focus areas, but that they're identifying, the mathematics, the recordings, to be able to share that. I mean, we went through a lot, we actually just thought about that the other day. We were gearing up for our first Apple training for that iPad in the spring. It was April that we actually started that training, and it was a lot of release time for teachers. So, and then in the summertime, they actually came up. So it was six months before we actually, or four months until we actually started up on that first day, and they are continually learning about things. And you know the challenges that we've had with our publisher in order to be able to get that sole instructional major tool on the iPad. So I'm just hoping that publishers will be able to maintain or keep up with that.
And even if they don't, is the tool still, you know, beyond textbooks?
Well, we've had CDs available to us by publishers.
No, but I'm sorry, even if we weren't trying to meet a mandate, even if we didn't have the digital mandate, how is this tool still important to meeting the Common Core, to meeting those? And if we didn't have that, what are those classrooms and those expectations going to look?
I think that what, what Dr. Gettys is proposing is that it's going to put the hands of that device right into that child. In the pictures that I provided to you, you saw two children on one computer. This is basically providing that one-to-one, where they're actually doing those things that I shared earlier about preparing them for the park and preparing them for a Common Core curriculum.
I just wanted to add on the instructional materials adoption. It's so critical at this point in time. I don't believe we're going to take a publisher's word on it that says we're going to have this. We're going to say, this is our, these are our platforms, these are our requirements. You either have to run on this now, or we're looking elsewhere. That's the point we're at. So it's just too critical. And so we don't want to get to 15, 16 and still be scratching our heads, but we've got this digital content, and how can we run it on? We're not going to, we're not going to do that.
Just to add to the point, and we've had many discussions with Citrus Springs Middle School, and we've actually talked about, you know, prior to Dr. Gettys' plan, could those students go back to a traditional classroom? That, that's challenging. I think that would be a step, a step back. And you know, what you had seen and observed there, picture that next year without those devices in their hands.
So I would say, can you think about this? Read, read, there's a lot of detail in this larger document that I really feel like you need to read. It talks about some of the tools we use to measure our level of technology competence with teachers. It's a state tool, so we can compare our results with the state. That's all on this document. So there's a lot in there. And think about the big picture, and just think about it, and I'd like to come back together and have a conversation and see where we go from there. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Gettys. Appreciate it. All right. I think we're to handwriting. I was asked to gather some information from throughout our elementary schools on the subject of penmanship. It's kind of, it seems like a totally different direction after we get through talking about one-to-one and technology. I've compiled that information in this PowerPoint, and it'll kind of provide an overview as to where we are in regards to the instruction of penmanship. And I do have some student work samples at the back, I'll point out. And then I do have a stack of resource materials to share with you, and I hope that that'll meet all the things that I was asked to gather. As a teacher, standards are where we begin when we plan our instruction. And our penmanship expectations were woven throughout the next generation standards. These are the kindergarten and the first grade standards. I'm not going to read through them, I'll just post them for you. But you need to know that our students have already shifted to the Common Core in both kindergarten and first grade. Second, third, fourth, and fifth grade also had penmanship standards incorporated in the next generation standards. We are still teaching from these standards, although we are blending with the Common Shifting to the Common Core, penmanship is only addressed in kindergarten and first grade. The Common Core standards do include specific expectations for technology use throughout the writing standards. As you can see, in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, the expectation is for students to use technology with guidance and support from adults. Third grade is the first mention of keyboarding skills. In fourth grade, students are expected to utilize technology throughout the writing process, culminating in keyboarding ability to write or type one-page document during a single setting. In fifth grade, the expectation is for a minimum of two pages in a single setting. So they're going to have to know how to keyboard. So the question was, what is taught in Citrus County? Well, when I surveyed the 11 elementary schools, and I do have to thank my colleagues for coming and supporting me, their schools were awesome with getting back to me on what they were doing. I found that there was consistent penmanship instruction throughout pre-K and kindergarten. Students are explicitly taught how to form each letter and are given daily practice to build this skill. In kindergarten and first, excuse me, in first and second grade, penmanship is also taught. Letter formation, spacing between the words, and overall legibility are emphasized. Individual assistance is provided through one-on-one conferencing. And when I talked to first and second grade teachers, they said, really, the challenge is trying to break those habits that a child may have even come to pre-K with from home, starting at the bottom and those sorts of things. I found that manuscript is introduced throughout our county in third grade. Some teachers begin this year with this, others wait until the second quarter, while others wait until after FCAT to provide this direct instruction time. Just as in younger grades, letter formation, connections between the letters, and overall legibility are emphasized. Cursive is reviewed in fourth and fifth grade with individual support provided. And one reason why this instruction is necessary is that in the Harcourt Storytown series, the spelling is in cursive. And I can tell you, having taught the Hooten Mifflin series before that myself, it was also in cursive then. That's been a typical place for a cursive handwriting to be, and it continues in our Harcourt series. And, and the other issue is that students need to be able to write in cursive if they're ever able to be able to read cursive.
So you're referring to the founding documents, Miss Patrina, that it's in cursive, all of them in cursive.
Of course.
No, but you know what's interesting, Linda? I had a student in the science fair, and I was commenting on how neat her printing, and she's written cursive in her notebook. She was a middle school student. And I was, I was complimenting her on her handwriting. And she said, she laughed at me, and she said, you know, my sister can't, my sister doesn't know how to write cursive. And her teacher wrote notes on their paper in cursive, and she said, I can't read it. She said, it looks like Chinese to me. I had never occurred to me that even, it's not even the old English cursive style, it's the regular style of writing that as adults, we all grew up, used, having to learn that the student couldn't read. Now, she was in a private school, so I have to say, wasn't one of our students, but I was really a little floored by her comment. And I think her sister was older than her, actually.
And if that's very accurate, I think if you talk to any third, fourth, fifth grade teacher who teaches cursive, and that they'd be able to tell you that the children at least need to learn how to make and connect the letters if they're ever able to be able to read it. What are the results of our current penmanship instruction? I just wanted to point out that it has led our students to success on Florida writes. We've had 0% of our students in the last four years score unscoreable, which would mean illegible. So that was, that was encouraging.
Wow.
And of course, our Florida rights scores have contributed to our overall highly performing district status. So I guess what I'm saying is that what we're currently doing has not hurt us, and it has contributed to our success.
How long, but at what point do they no longer start doing that and writing on the rights to take it? That rights will change in two years to a type, will it not?
My understanding is that it's going to be embedded in the park. And so until we know for sure what the park is going to be doing, we won't know for sure what that's going to look like, but we have-
But the samples all show that it is typed.
Yes.
So, I mean, there is no, there is no showing that those students that right now are writing their rights, those same students or the stu, those same cohorts, two years from now that are taking that same test, will be having to type it and not write it?
That's taking the test and taking the, that is correct.
That's, that's correct. And that's my understanding, based on what we know right in park.
And, and most of those students, again, would not be just taking the, I mean, if they're going to be taking the test in that, would the assumption be that that's how the expectation of teaching them writing would be?
My guess is it's, let me go ahead and continue on. I think we're going to always have to have a combination. That's my bottom line. Kids are always going to have to know how to write. And I think because they do live in both worlds, even though where they're going to be tested in the future on a computer, obviously, their keyboarding skills need to be up to par to be able to do that. But I think there's always going to be a place for a signature, you know, by hand.
Signature.
Well, and it could be even more than that. But let me go ahead and share what I, what I found. I, a simple search on Google, asking, is penmanship important, brought me to pages of articles that have been written on the subject. And I honestly was a little surprised to find out that I couldn't find one that said children shouldn't be taught how to write by hand. And basically, everything I found, it came down to two different things. Number one, the overall brain development and learning of the actual formation of the letters, hearing the letters, basically help children do more than just simply being able to tap the letter A on a keyboard. There are different brain processes in place. And so that it's imperative that they still learn how to form letters. And then its second issue was the lasting impression left by the quality of a person's penmanship. So for example, if somebody has a high-quality paper, but it's not written legibly, it's turned in, the teacher just looks at it, or whomever, and says, oh, this isn't any good, their ideas must not be good, and it automatically gets a lower grade, or pretty much what this study's found. So it is important that children be able to write legibly when they're going to do something by hand. Is the lasting impressions that it gives. So I wasn't going to go over each of these quotes that I have, but they're all based on different articles that I was able to find. I found that a good penmanship program should involve three simultaneous processes. Listening to the sound of the letter, so that they can hear it. Looking at the letter, that visual part, and then actually making the movement to form the letter, the kinesthetic, that we know we need to have all modalities. And so you think of a pre-K or a kindergarten child, they need to be incorporating all three of these things for, in order to be able to truly understand that letter and what it means.
The kinesthetic part about, it really stays in your mind when you make it.
Absolutely.
You just hit the key, any key, be any letter.
Absolutely. And that, that came out very clearly. So a lot of the brain, a lot of the neuroscience research was pointing that out. Penmanship needs to become automatic, just like decoding and reading and knowing your math facts, so that a child can just write and not have to think about the formation of the letter A, and they actually are concentrating on what they're writing. Just like in reading, we don't want them to have to spend so much time decoding, but they're not able to get the understanding or to build the comprehension.
How many of you teach education now? Are the elementary school teachers taught how to teach penmanship? Or you wing it?
I, I believe that it is incorporated briefly into their instruction. I was thinking back on when I went through school in the early 90s, and there wasn't much time spent on it, but I remember distinctly talking to Kathy Rubel, that she had a whole class on penmanship when she went through school. So it's just an interesting change of our times. What we have relied upon is the programs that we use for our teachers to know how to teach penmanship. But that was something you and I had spoken of, because I do think that it has to be a factor that's weighed in.
That just has to be sequential, logical, there has to be a method, like you're saying, that you use. It can't be, you know, whatever you feel like doing that day, or whatever way you form the letter, it's specific, the later form of the letter.
And, and that is true. I think that that is when you get the best results, is for a child to have that explicit instruction, absolutely. But it starts before they come to us even. And, but I think it's something that's worth considering. I have some final thoughts on here. I just kind of tried to summarize where, where I- I have some final thoughts on here, I just kinda tried to summarize where, where I thought we were. Manuscript and cursive handwriting are being taught throughout Citrus County. Practice time is embedded throughout their day. After initial instruction, we do have some inconsistent expectations for cursive handwriting in day-to-day work. Students may choose to write in manuscript or cursive as long as it's legible, and I can just speak at Pleasant Grove on that. You know, my fourth and fifth grade, after, while they're doing cursive, yes, everything has to be in cursive, but then once they're finished with that, a child is comfortable, they may choose. So I do think that there is some inconsistencies with that. Again, bringing out the point we said earlier, if a child's not taught how to write in cursive, they're unable to read in cursive. Again, many students with disabilities absolutely struggle with handwriting. Absolutely. Former ESE teacher, I can tell you, a lot of my time was spent on helping my, a lot of little boys, but some little girls as well.
We print.
Absolutely. And there's not necessarily an issue with that, but I had, when I was talking to third grade yesterday, they had one of their little boys in ESE who'd print, he can't read at all, but his cursive is beautiful. So I don't know, you know, maybe just being able to form the letters and the connections, I think for some children that works better, but then other children struggle with it.
And truthfully, one of the other big problems we have is when teachers write notes in cursive, it can become terribly difficult for someone with ESE to be able to take those notes and read those notes.
Absolutely.
And I see in a lot of the classrooms, particularly at the elementary level, many of our teachers are printing their notes, which, or printing the boards on the board, which I value, because being one of those kids, it's extremely difficult to know the information that's essential if it's in cursive. Even my mother's on handwriting to this day, I will have to hand it back to her sometimes and say, I don't know what it is.
Well, if I handed you mine, you might say the same thing.
It's beautiful!
Hers maybe.
And watching a child who does have a problem, who does have disability, and watching them write, I'm a madam, you know, this child, this child, you're able to immediately, you know, help the child, so.
You can get some help for them.
I agree.
One of the things I was going to, going to have mentioned was, one of my biggest ah-hahs, was understanding the connection between the overall hand strength and penmanship. And our students' thumbs work really well on their video games, but it's not building their hand strength. They're not playing the kind of games that we played, or perhaps even our children played. For example, playing outside in the dirt and the mud with their cars, or playing with Play-Doh, or Legos, or those sorts of things that built their hand strength. And so they're coming to school with their hands weaker, and it hurts their hands to write. Add to that fact that in kindergarten and first grade, we no longer have the Crayola curriculum that we may have had in the past, in which they're not spending much time coloring, cutting, gluing. They're spending a little bit of time, but it's not much, I'll be absolutely honest with you, compared to, you know, when I first started out and I worked with Barbara Klein and Becky O'Connell, there was an awful lot of coloring, cutting, and gluing going on. These days, there's not. And so again, they're, they're not building their hand strength, so that's affecting their penmanship, it's affecting how they're doing.
I saw Laura, who was in the crowd, that was in a paper talking about the notes that people were sending to Sandy Hook, and they're telling, sending sympathy notes, but they emphasized all of it was in writing. There was a note, but then they wrote their own comments on the cursive printing, what he wanted to, but, and that was important, I thought. I don't know about you, but when I get a card and it's printed with the name of the sender also, nothing is written, nothing. She took a lot of time to do that, but when you get something with a person who's written a note in their own handwriting, if it's written in cursive, it's not personal, you know, they take the path to do it.
And I, I value a personal note as well. I don't know if I'm showing my age in that regard, you know, I don't know what, what direction we're going in the future, but I can tell you that one of the things that I found out is that we are not alone in questioning the need for consistent penmanship instruction. Two examples of states are, both California and Iowa legislators are adding penmanship expectations despite the fact that they're not included in Common Core. So I think that there is an expectation that as an adult, you do need to be able to write legibly, in addition to be able to keyboard.
California also doesn't have computer-based testing right now.
Okay.
Exactly. So, I know, that's what I'm saying, so I think they probably do need to teach penmanship since they're not gonna be able to provide them with the technology they need, so I'm sure they do have to incorporate it.
In addition to penmanship, keyboarding skills must be embedded if our students are to achieve the level of expectations of the Common Core for both career and college readiness.
What's interesting, though, is you start out with bullet one, and you end with the last bullet. You have penmanship every day, but the thing that the students are going to have to do to meet Common Core is the last bullet.
Keyboarding.
Do we have keyboarding in every day?
I'd say that we're building keyboarding into what we're doing. Now, I can tell you that I think that's something that we're working with Dr. Gettis in establishing.
Because the survey we had recently pretty much showed that it was at most typically once a month, in what the elementary schools were doing.
A little lower grade.
In particular, to the lower grades. I know that when I recently got an email from Mary Jane Taptin, and I specifically asked her on third grade, and she said they must be fluent in word processing.
By fifteen, sixteen?
By, is it fifteen, sixteen? I think it's either fifteen, sixteen, or, no, fourteen, fifteen. So that means our kindergartners-
Fully.
Now, are going to have to do that, and so again, I go back, I see bullet one, but bullet, the last bullet is the one that really is where we, we have nothing, and so right now, while we're practicing penmanship and talking about it, every day we're not doing the other, our students, it won't matter what we teach them in the classroom, because unless they can articulate it-
Wait, is there a program that when you type, it writes it in cursive-ish?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
But is there one that's more like our handwriting, just fancy letters?
Yes, oh, absolutely, there's all kinds of ones.
So we could be teaching kids keyboarding and recognizing cursive letters at the same time.
Well, I think that, especially kindergarten and first grade, when the first running, or
pre-K and kindergarten, actually, when they're first learning their letters, it's absolutely imperative that they use that by hand in addition to what they're doing on a keyboard. I think that there's several issues with the keyboarding. I think that one is our lack of technology specialist support in elementary, I just have to kinda throw that out there. We are all using our media tech people as creatively as we can. I know that mine, Charlotte Meyer, worked very, very hard last spring to incorporate the keyboarding and the word processing skills kids were going to need into a, pardon me, checklist, in which she was watching all students. I can tell you that beginning of the year, her intention was to do a whole research unit with the kids, and it wasn't, it was by the second week she was pulling her hair out saying, but they can't change the font.
But legs-
They can't cut and paste, so we've, well, I think there's several things, I think we've got to decide, I didn't investigate that aspect of this, and then number two, decide on what direction to go and make sure we have the-
But Common Core is showing us it's not a separate pullout.
Right.
Common Core is not saying, as we've been teaching technology, technology has been a pullout, and it's typically been on the wheel. And I think nearly all, but I think one, maybe two of the elementary schools have at least a half-time technology teacher. So nine of the schools theoretically on paper have a technology teacher doing that. What we've learned through our pilot is the technology specialists are the classroom teacher. And that's really where, where things are moving, is that our teachers are becoming the technology specialists, because they don't have time to be able to pick up the phone when there's a problem on, on the tablet or the computer device to have somebody come down and do it. They're the ones that have to fix it, because they gotta keep going into the net side of it. So my concern still is, and I think Charlotte did an impeccable job, I, I think she is a model for the expectation, but just like the research, we tend to teach how we learned. The trouble is, more and more and more of us, I don't know in business, the last time I either got or sent a handwritten letter. I don't know when any of us, when we wrote a parent, did it through handwriting. I don't know in the real world, many times outside of writing a personal card to a person that I use print, and it's only usually to my wife if I do that. So the concern, though, is that we spend every day on one piece of learning, but the question is, what are we doing on the most essential thing that the students are going to need to articulate that learning?
But I don't think it's either or, when you start talking like that, it seems like it's-
But right now-
And I think it's-
Except, here's the thing, teachers will tell us, and our administrators have, where are they gonna find time in the day? The time now has been challenging. Those that are doing Success Maker will tell you they're giving sack breakfasts sometimes to the kids, pulling them off the buses, getting them into the labs, back and forth, in order to accomplish that, which is critical.
I agree, you have to invest in the embedded, it cannot be just in a lab, you have to embed it in your classroom teaching, and I think all of us is embedded. The instruction in handwriting, you start off and shows a way to do it, but you have, that's written in a classroom at each period sign, some of the where you're practicing or using, just like with a computer, it should not be just a computer class, it should be used in all the classes.
And I would agree, I would agree.
Part of what's happening.
I still sometimes struggle with the difference of, like you said, there is penmanship, there is print, or what I think of as print, and then there's cursive. I think of penmanship as learning the letters, particularly at the K through second grade level, where the cursive is where I, I, perhaps we might say there's inconsistency, but what I'm not always sure is if that inconsistency's been bad, because that's, to me, that critical point of, is cursive as critical as the penmanship?
And I think that that's why there has been a, probably why there has been some inconsistency. When I mentioned the technology specialist, what I found that Charlotte was able to do, and then what Todd Bone is trying to continue doing, is teaching the overall formatting skills and giving them practice in some of those strictly technology word processing things. And then back in the classroom, the teacher can support that, rather than the teacher trying to find time, okay, do I not teach something else today, or carve in some time to teach the actual formatting word skills? So that's why I was trying to clarify that.
Charlotte, I can tell you, I brag about, her, Dr. Gettis will tell you, her poster that has standards, the expectations for each grade level is, is, is very impressive.
If I always remember too, there are places to go, go buy vegetables, go order something at a restaurant, no one looks out a knife and takes this down for you, then you have to-
They do some of the restaurants, I can-
But that is, if you don't, I go, power to faders, no one does that, so you have, you have to go, you don't cut out one to go to the other because maybe it's for you.
No, but one is representing the substantial base of everything they'll do, and one is becoming lesser and lesser and lesser every year, and I just worry that-
Well, you don't take that much time on the one, the handwriting.
You know, look, the bottom line is this, if we didn't have the stupid testing that the kids had to take- If we had the keyboarding skills in kindergarten, I mean, let's just be honest here, they have plenty of time to learn keyboarding skills, we all learned it in high school, and it was, and it was fine, we already knew how to write by then. We are being driven by testing, and it's robbing children of their opportunity to learn life skills. So instead of saying, we'll do it, I keep saying, where is our red flag, saying, you are killing our children, you are destroying our schools, you are taking away their opportunity to learn something that is more beneficial than teaching them keyboarding in kindergarten. Where is this uprising from people who are saying enough is enough? We can't just keep saying it's okay, it's not okay. Look at the conflict we're having just here between whether they have loop-de-loop or printing, no, they have to keyboard. These are children!
I can tell you that so many of them have the digital devices for the keyboarding. I know that we're using like Type2Learn, has been something we've used each version as it comes out, and our kids have been learning how to do some keyboarding that way, but I don't know, I don't know how you balance it all.
Little child, when they can't even hold a pencil right, and some kids come to school and they've never colored, and they don't know their numbers, and they don't know their letters, and now we say, oh, forget all of that, you have to learn Word, and you have to learn Excel, and you have to format, and you have to format, you have to know what a font is. Well, we need to trace the letter on their, on their backs, the letter S.
That felt good.
What is moving in one generation?
And I, I agree with you, but Pat, the other thing too is, the technology and the use of that, when you look at writing, they, the kids are writing more when they do have that opportunity.
When they're age-appropriate, though, not at second and third grade, in seventh grade, in eighth grade, when they already know how to print and write, and cursive isn't an issue, and printing isn't an issue, they got it. You don't learn new letters when you go to seventh grade, you get all the font you got, right?
And this, you know, job, that was just one, we talked about, I was just thinking of missionary going, you know, to Africa, South America, whatever place, and no Wi-Fi, he's dead, he can't do anything, he's gotta ride, he's gotta-
Satellite.
I was, I was sitting in Ms. Simon's satiating the other day, and on my phone came a text message, text message from somebody who was in Africa on a safari.
I know that, I know.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
Here's your technology in the world.
You're the tribe that's out there, so, in the Amazon, they've never seen anything like that, so you have to have all the world, you can have one or the other. I wanna ask you, when you're talking about keyboarding, is it being taught like we learn typing, or is it like, I, I watch some kids, the fastest to me, they can, they can do two fingers that's when I can do three fingers. How's it being taught?
I can tell you only, I did not ask the other elementary schools about this, I can tell you Pleasant Grove uses Type2Learn, and actually does teach them how to use the five fingers.
Yeah.
And we're teaching in the cordy, keyboard, where everybody else in the world uses a different one, the Dvorak, is that what it's called? So we're, we're tied into it because now we're so embedded, you can't kindergarten, you can't unlearn it and learn a different keyboard. We should start with a different keyboard, but our kindergarten can-
I didn't know we had that.
We're Americans, we use the cordy.
If you don't, have you ever tried to use a computer in another country?
It's different.
Their keys are in different places because the history is, remember typing? And then the little keys get all tied up, so the man who invented the keyboard spaces so that your, your home keys and all that are, with your pinkies are your most common keys, so they go slower. That's why we have that stupid keyboard. And the other countries have realized that and put on the, on the keys that are easier to use, all the ones that are used more commonly, and so the keyboard is rearranged. I've shown this to kids in school, they're like, how would you know how to type? You wouldn't. You wouldn't.
We drive on the right side of the road, too.
I'm really pleased to see that, that throughout the school system in the elementary grade, kindergarten, through the grade, that we are still focusing on these things, and it's not onto keyboards only, you know, I'm glad to see that.
And I do have some materials I can share with you, you had asked me to bring materials of what we're using, and I can tell you that the reading series that is up for adoption, Ms. Whittaker was very helpful and gave me copies, and we were able to flag some pages where they actually had handwriting instruction in it, so if we do choose to adopt that series, there is handwriting instruction embedded in it. Do you wanna see some things that we have? I just, I just put some work samples, I pulled them off the walls of my school, there's like a K front and back, one, front and back, two, three, four, and five, just to kinda give you an idea. Had a hard time finding fifth-grade cursive samples, I'll be honest with you.
We have, I've drafted students, mostly middle school and high school, and a lot of them are eligible, and they're printed, so these are very nice.
They are, they're very nice. I know as a teacher-
And I think some of the best.
Legible ones, you know.
Ms. Kirby, they do have this PowerPoint, so you just click on those links and you'll be, you'll be able to-
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. And I'll just pass these around, I can tell you, these are some examples of things that my teachers, my copies from, they use the Harcourt that we currently have for all of their teaching. Ms. Powers actually came to visit Pleasant Grove about four years ago and was able to see one of my kindergarten teachers at the time, Marina Colber, use, we call Miss Marnie videos, but they're TV teacher videos, and there's actual instructions on how to teach, and there's videos, DVDs, that the kids follow along, and they've been really, really cool. So, anyway, but there's all kinds of things about how to, how to draw and fill in the shapes and scenes and all kinds of things, I'll pass these around. Sorry, I'm forgetting that statement, my apologies. And then the last thing that I had is the Pearson.
Pearson?
Scott Forsman, I'm looking at the same, I'm saying it's Scott Forsman, not Pearson, I'm totally confused. Thank you, okay, we got it. There's actually a Readers and Writers Notebook that you'll be able to see, and there's a page flag, and then I have third grade with a- And then I have third grade with initial cursive instruction. And then fourth, mid-fourth grade that has some pages. And like I said, you'll be able to just see that there's some things embedded. So let me hand these to you. And then, do you want to see materials that they're currently using? Cause I have all these, but I can just leave them over here? Would you like to?
Yes, I sure.
I'll leave them with this powers.
And may I take them to the school because you need them back right now.
I don't need them right now, I'm gonna stay on the block. So, you think that's okay?
Y'all can wait.
No, I'm gonna listen.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby.
Maybe one could, as many comments compare. So from people like me who say, can't read anything. And they also say they've got the math. No one knows how to do anything without a computer or with some other device.
Okay, we're ready for implementation of the status of Common Core for all levels.
Good afternoon, school board members. Superintendent Himmels, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mullin. We continue the, so I spent a lot of time this morning kind of going over an overview of the Common Core. Now, the next part is the implementation. And I welcome Mark McCoy, he is here with us now. Donnie Brown from the elementary. And then Anita Eaton will be sharing the implementation from the middle schools. So our format is basically the same in regards to our slides. I had spoken a little bit earlier about lesson study and how that is actually getting a hold in our district as regards to the model. Their bottom right-hand corner of the screen, that is actually a group from the mathematics lesson study. And those folks actually teach a lesson. One teacher teaches a lesson as the others observe the lesson. They come back, they get together and then they start to, each one of them has a role in that lesson study model to identify our students on task. How is that delivery of that lesson? And then they talk about their changes and then they go back and teach it, implementing those changes. And it's a long process, but it's a very valuable one. The Florida Department of Education has now identified a process in which to provide, the districts to provide information in regards to the Common Core state standards. And they have readiness gauges. And I shared this readiness gauge with you. This is the first time that I did it as the lead person for the district in Common Core standards. They are identified, or they're broken down into the implementation plan, professional development, implement appropriate levels, implement literacy standards, instructional resources, student progress. And you can see they're broken down on the left-hand side by the school level. And the black basically means that it's not needed at this time. So this was the result of my submission to the state. I took a snapshot of it and we basically are green. And what does green entail? It entails that we have a plan. And we have supporting documents in order to be able to substantiate that plan for those areas. In January, after that submission took place, the state actually put out their report as to how all of the districts actually reported. And they had identified 72 districts in the state. So basically, when you look at that on the left-hand side, again, those are the breakdowns for plan, professional development, so on. And it has the number of districts that actually replied, whether they were green. Yellow was that they have a plan, but they don't have any supporting documents. And then red, no plan, no documents. So just to let you know, we are on the green all the way down. And then you can kind of see the percent submitted.
So what, so, all right, the right-hand column is citrus?
Left-hand side, no. This is actually citrus. We actually, that's 100% green for all of those. What the first column shares, Ms. Deutschman, is that 35 districts responded in green for the elementary for implementation plan. 19 yellow, zero red. And then to the right is the column for the percentages.
So it's the same people?
Yes, ma'am. This actually was a topic of a conversation at their state board meeting. All right, so creating awareness is our first slide at the district, in the school levels. We started our Common Core initiative this past summer. It was in 2012 and the DLE hosted what they called a countdown to Common Core. And we basically had four representatives from the district level and from the school level to attend the professional development. Eighty-seven people from Citrus County Schools attended. And four-day training down in Orlando. And we basically were provided that big overview. And Stuart Greenberg was there and he presented a lot of information on the ELAs. And again, very rewarding. But one of the things that they had built into that day is planning sessions. So at the end of this day, each of the teams would get together. And Mrs. Himmel had gone, Mr. Mullin, myself, Mr. Simon, Ms. Wertheiler and Carol Mayner were on the district team that actually attended. The next bullet is Common Core State Standards Presentation for Schools. I shared just a very snippet of that this morning with you in regards to the overview. But what we wanted to do was that the district level had a, basically a common PowerPoint presentation that each of the schools would then share with their staff back at their schools to generate awareness. I've actually placed that on the jump drive and it's there for you in detail. I think it's a total of about 33. The next bullet is a website. And show it to you very quickly. There is a website that we've actually developed. And when I try to communicate with these schools, I try to include that. Why I'm not getting up to that top portion there?
Do you have to use your browser and make your browser fold? Up over onto the top right, next to the X?
About this one.
Yeah.
Here we go. Curriculum instruction. And actually, the one that I actually can actually manipulate is the secondary web. And on the left-hand side, Common Core. Started this a couple of years ago and it actually has a list of the Florida Next Gen standards, which I talked about earlier. But then if you go down, there's a website here of the Common Core State Standards. On the left-hand side, just what I have put on all of your jump drive. These are the actual standards for mathematics and also for English. One of the things that I shared with principals earlier, since we gave them all a laptop this year, you can actually go on, there is an app for the Common Core standards. If you go to the App Store, type in Common Core. It's a little green with a little black circles. And you can actually download that in a very simplified version. If you scroll on down, you can see there's the link to that app for the Apple, the Android of those standards. Scrolling on down, some descriptions, some action plans and also some parent information. And that has been shared recently. Okay. One of the things that we had talked about this year was actually creating curriculum parent nights. And a consistent presentation was actually generated for that. Also on that jump drive that I provided for you. It was basically twofold. One, it provided parents with an opportunity to see the progression from students moving through grades three through, well, K through 12. But basically, at the end, it started to identify a lot of the Senate Bill Four. That and also the shift to the Common Core. So that was again, a PowerPoint that was shared with the schools. Content specialists have been sharing with lead teachers and department chairs. As you saw, Mrs. Jordan's example this morning does that on a frequent basis when she's working with her secondary folks. Implementation of Common Core, as stated by Ms. Kirby, today, we are implementing the standards in K1. One of the things that we had identified early on as a district, as we came into the 2012, 2013 school years, that we lacked the materials for kindergarten, first grade for mathematics. And we saw a gap there. So we actually started to identify with our current program publisher, and that was Harcourt. And we commissioned with them to be able to print. It wasn't really extra money except for the printing costs for materials that they had aligned to the Common Core called Encore. And so that was purchased for all K1 students in Citrus County. And as you know, as we said earlier today, the textbook adoption has taken place. And Mr. Dr. Gettys will be sharing that with you as far as the recommendations at the next meeting. Professional development. This has been an ongoing ever since last May on our professional development. As you may have been there for the Max Thompson. That was a segment was Moving Schools Forward: Lessons Learned From Exemplary Leaders. And he embedded the Common Core in that. Stuart Greenberg had actually come and did a presentation, Peeling Away the Layers for Common Core State Standards For English and Language Arts Teachers. And that was well-attended. Kathy Lassiter is a, as part of the Department of Education's Technical Assistance for Administrative Observations of Teachers. Kathy Lassiter from Lead and Learn came and actually talked about standards leader. And she helped and assisted us in unpacking the Common Core standards. And it was really nice because she provided that vertical aspect to the standards that you could see how this K1, 2, and all the way to the 12th grade built on each of the previous years. The summer Common Core training that I had mentioned. PD360, I think you're familiar with PD360. It's the online video versions of professional development. Some of the movers and shakers in education. We actually purchased a component to PD360 which was specific to Common Core. And last year, we actually purchased that for every K1, 2, 3 teachers in the district. So that way their professional development could be anytime, anywhere, available online. In the fall, this was just this year, they actually, the Department of Education held more professional development. And the professional development actually zeroed in on secondary courses such as biology, Algebra I, seventh grade English. We basically tapped the people in our district, in our Ed Services Group for the Program Specialists and Teachers on Special Assignment, as well as teachers from the schools to attend. And they participated in that training that was given in the fall. And then our professional development that we look forward to this summer is 2013, which the state has started to communicate with us. And Lenny Wertheiler has been working with the schools to identify eight, a team of eight staff members from their, from every school in the district to attend a two-day session which will be more specific to content on the Common Core standards. And so modeling instruction and also walking away with materials. So our future focus, as I had mentioned on my timeline earlier this morning, instructional materials will be identified for secondary math and English Language Arts that are aligned to the Common Core standards. We had a, an evaluator, if you will, come from Evergreen Solutions and met with the Edge Services team in order to be able to evaluate the Department of Education's implementation of the Common Core standards. And one of the things that we had talked about was making better, or making fuller use of the resources from C-Poms. And so again, when that first came out, and I believe it was in 2008, it was still in its infancy. They've really put a lot of effort in being able to identify quality lessons for teachers. As I had mentioned earlier before about the expansion of lesson study model for the elementary in this room, there's a grant that we received called the Summit Grant that's allowing those teachers in the fifth grade to be part of the lesson study professional development for science. And again, continuing to look at high-yield strategies. So I will turn it over to Donnie Brown to give you a schools perspective.
Thank you, Ms. Clutter.
Good afternoon. Well, it's a pleasure to talk to you for a few minutes about what we're doing about Common Core at the elementary level. And I would invite my colleagues to chime in at any time if I forget something. But of course, to begin, we needed to create that awareness. And as Mr. Clutter said, we began last spring with the administrators and really looking at how those Common Core standards were structured. And if you look at a continuum from kindergarten on through 12, you'll see things like with prompting and support, able to ask questions about key details in a text. And then further, it's using those key details to understand the text. So it's a continuum and makes a lot of sense for that vertical articulation. So that was our first awareness piece as administrators. And then as he said, we went to the Summer Institute over in Orlando. We have principals, assistant principals, and then key leaders. Sometimes that was Satosha, sometimes that was ESE specialist or a lead teacher in the building. We came back from that and we shared with the staff. Certainly with kindergarten and first grade, we've gone into more depth. But we wanted all of our teachers to have an awareness of the Common Core and what that was going to entail in the future. Excuse me. And then one of the things the Department of Education offers, these blast-off Teps, and they come out weekly. I do have some copies that I will pass out to you. So we get these weekly and we include them in our staff newsletters just to give teachers ideas of things that would be happening in the classrooms with Common Core. We also include them in our monthly newsletters. Some of us post them on our websites as well. Just to give an overview of some of the ideas with Common Core at the different levels. The parent universities that Mr. Clutter mentioned, they're sometimes just called curriculum nights or parent nights. We share the PowerPoint and we had a time of questions and answers just letting parents know what Common Core is, what to expect in the future, and tying some of those assessments to the Common Core. And we, across the board, sometimes we would have 20 parents. Sometimes we would have 100. It just depended sometimes on the time of year, the time of day we had it, whether we included a meal or student performances or whatnot. But across the board, everyone said how helpful it was, how informative. And they really got a lot out of those meetings. We've also shared at SAC meetings. And again, trying to include something about Common Core in our monthly newsletters. Any questions about the awareness piece? All right, we'll go on to what we have done as far as implementation at the elementary level. As has been stated, our kindergarten and first grades are fully implementing the Common Core. They've been doing that since the beginning of the year. Our second grades are coming on board the second half of the year. And the other grade levels have been experimenting and just getting familiar with some of those Common Core and seeing where they can incorporate it into some of the standards that they're teaching through the next generation. We've been doing that through various means with our professional development. The lesson study models really have taken off at the elementary level this year. We sometimes start with a Common Core standard just to give them experience in developing a lesson that would address the Common Core. The professional learning communities that have been meeting take time to just unpack the standards. Well, what would that look like? And how would we address that in our grade level? We try to use those instructional strategies, Max Thompson's high-yield strategies in all of our lessons. But certainly as we begin to develop Common Core lessons, we need to make sure that we've incorporated that. We've looked at extended reading passages that have a focus on informational text. Reading content area for science and social studies and reading is something that we've really been promoting. We've used the PD360 videos. I mentioned C-Poms earlier. There are a lot of online resources for Common Core. I have the app on my iPad, trying to just start learning some of those. They go deep. And so you can take one standard and see how it's developed throughout the elementary and all the way through high school. We've worked with our staff, excuse me, on developing, on understanding text complexity. And one of the things we've shared with our parents as well as our staff is that Common Core is sort of a two-prong. The text that they're reading is more complex. But also what they're asked to do with that text is more complex. So we spend a little more time possibly on looking at similarities and differences between maybe a fiction piece of literature and a nonfiction. And how do they compare and how do they contrast?
More complex, do you mean in language or ideas or what?
And then writing. And then writing across the curriculum, using summarizing journals, writing to respond, those are things that are beginning to be operational in our schools. And then for our future focus, we want to of course continue with our K-1s and then begin to build third through fifth in both literacy and mathematics. And we also agree, we want to look at those mathematical practices more deeply. I think that's it for elementary unless you have any questions. Any questions?
Speaking about the summary journals?
Yes. That would be maybe responding to the essential question or summarizing their learning, writing that paragraph possibly each day in different content areas, not just in reading or writing. So they have science journals, they have math journals.
Are all the schools doing it the same way or is every school doing it differently?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't even begin to.
It's a little different.
I would say definitely because from class to class, it can't even be different within a school building.
Ms. Manos has one class that they're actually using iPods.
iPod. An iPod you write on? I thought iPod was music. Can you write on it?
Oh, touch.
Yeah, they have silence. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I'm Seaman.
Good afternoon. So, and I'm here for, with the middle school's point of view. So just as the elementary and high school and district level, we also attended Summer Institute over in Orlando to begin our journey with awareness to Common Core. And once returning to our schools, we all distributed copies of Common Core to our teachers. We did not supply them with the entire 600-page document, but we supplied them with the portions of Common Core that were specifically related to their content as well as grade levels. We had faculty meetings and shared the PowerPoint that was provided from the district so that we were all sharing the same information to our teachers. And so each of the middle schools have had at least one curriculum night or parent university. The attendance depended as to whether or not it was only a curriculum night or if other programs were involved in that night. So when it was combined with Avid and Science Fair or other programs, it drew a larger crowd as opposed to just simply being advertised as a curriculum night. We've also done some sharing in our advisory councils so that to get the word out to parents with what's going on, as well as with our school improvement planning committees and with our weekly bulletins that go out to staff, so there's a Common Core information included in those. And then in each of our schools, we all have a share folder that we use with our staff. And so in our share folders, it's where we are placing articles and different lesson plans and strategies so that teachers have access to those at any time. With our professional development, again, the starting point was Summer Institute for the administrators as well as lead teachers. And so, and some schools took their ESE staff and specialist, so it was that core group of leadership from each school that attended that institute over the summer. During planning period meetings, Common Core is also being addressed, and some schools have actually held book studies. And the focus of the book studies really was how to create change in a positive way on our campuses because we do know that moving from our next generation standards and moving into Common Core is a shift and it's a change in teaching and what we do. Also, the lesson studies are taking place at the middle school with our math and science teachers, and so those lesson studies have proven to be beneficial because our teachers have been able to collaborate with teachers from the other schools in the district. And so, and those lessons are being taught at our different middle schools. So it's not that, it's just they go to one school, but they've actually gone to different schools. So, and then they get together on Saturdays to actually take a look at the lesson and what went right and what may not have necessarily gone the way that they planned. Common Core websites and resource sharing is going on. We also use our data days to talk about the strategies that are being used in the classroom, high-yield strategies that are being used in the classroom currently, and how that's working, what the data says with student achievement. Our monthly staff meetings have a learning-focused strategy that's shared with all of staff and with expectations for implementation across the board. We also have our PLCs, our professional learning communities, that meet as well to focus on high-yield strategies. And our literacy leadership teams are very involved with taking a look at text and leveling text and finding materials that are appropriate for Common Core. And we are also using PD-360 for our professional development. And future plans, we will all be attending Summer Institute 2013 coming up, and so we will be taking teams of eight from our schools, and so to have more lead teachers involved in this process. And at the secondary level, we will have implementation of Common Core in our English Language Arts in the coming school year, and we'll continue with our professional development, lesson study, and providing information to parents. Any questions for middle school?
Thank you, Seaman.
Thank you.
Mr. McCoy.
Good afternoon, everyone. You know, the most interesting thing with us all getting together is that we're more common in the Common Core than we are different in the Common Core with the implementation. At the high school level, our creating awareness was basically the same as the other levels. We had Summer Institute where we sent a team of four, it was the leadership team. In my case, we also sent lead math and lead English teacher as well. We came back, we shared the PowerPoint with the staff, we've had curriculum nights like every other school has, we've shared it in enhancement council meetings, our department head meetings are centered around Common Core, and then that dissemination of that information from the department heads to the departments is also centered around Common Core. Our professional development, we actually sent teachers at all curriculum levels to a Common Core workshop that was held January 3rd. Crystal River actually housed science, history is housed at another school, language arts at another, so it was a good chance for everybody at the high school level to get together with their content areas. Department Vertical Alignment Meetings, we wanted to know where are we for 9th grade classes, 10th grade classes, 11th grade classes, and how is that going to gateway all the way up to our senior class? So we had to get that really straight first. And then we went to course-specific PLCs to create shared lesson plans so that all our English 1 teachers were using the same strategies for their Common Core, Algebra I, their history classes, and so on.
Was that more challenging at high school for them, or were they using the same strategy or not?
It's challenging because you may have different grade levels in each one of those classes. So it's a little bit, a little different, but it's not much different than going from, you know, 6th grade to 7th grade to 8th grade in the vertical, you know, alignment of Common Core. We also use PD-360 videos and other online resources, and we just sent last Friday a group of teachers to lesson study modules that the middle schools have been, and the elementary schools have been involved in. Our future focus, again, going to the Summer Institute 2013, where we're going to send eight teachers from each school, content-specific, to learn the modeling and the strategies for each one of those Common Core strategies based on their content, and then continued PLCs by subject area so we can create more like lessons to go along with that vertical Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Appreciate it.
Board members, I thank you. I know it's been a long morning and day with regards to Common Core. There was a comment that I heard the other day that I probably would say, I won't put up that white flag, but it's initiative fatigue, and I really think that we're probably all experiencing that. It's, we've got so many initiatives out there that the fatigue is starting to wear. I've been, I've been around for all of those three curriculum developments that I shared today, and that when we went from 2008 Next Gen, I really thought we had a handle on it, and then all of a sudden, we jumped right into Common Core. So the thing that was nice about that is that we saw a lot of similarities with that Next Gen initiative and that Common Core. But I'll tell you, as far as, just in our, in our quick, just a summation, as far as things to look forward to, obviously, this is going to have an impact on instructional timelines because when we start to get to that blended, to full implementation, then that bank of items for our formative and possibly assumptive assessments is going to have to be looked at. What I liked about the Common Core is that we basically are, we'll be looking at common instructional materials throughout the United States. You know, in years past, books would be written for Texas or for Florida or California, those are the top three. Now you actually have all of them basically, not because of the zip code, but that they're all following that. And just what Mark had talked about, when we talked about the, when the three principals got together and I, we truly talked about that articulation of school levels and being able to know from 5th grade to 6th grade, what is it that they're seeing in the ELAs and the math, and from 8th grade to 9th grade, and really kind of look at something like that in the summertime and maybe build that into it. So that is our presentation. Board members, any questions?
You know, I just, I just have to comment, the Common Core, I see, you know, I think originally I was under the impression that it was going to begin in K-2 and roll its way through the school system with those students, not, I think that's not true.
Most of no.
And it's also like in the course exams and the graduation high school requirements and that, the expectation was that all of a sudden overnight, this next year's class was all going to be up here, and they were never prepared to be up here in the preceding years. So, so some of the expectations I think are possibilities, and I think that you all take it very seriously and take it all to heart and take responsibility for it, and there are certain things that we're just, we haven't given our kids, our teachers, time to even catch up to what the expectations are. It's so, I'm so out of whack, and I really hope that our state legislators do take a breath because they're already talking about maybe ramping back this timeline because it's, it's, it's not right. You know, you know how I feel about this, and my red flag is a French Revolution red flag from, we saw the movie Les Men. And it's, it's, you have to listen to the people, it's who are people we're hurting? It's our own children, it's our future of our country, so that's why I feel so strongly about it. I know they want, we need to be, have them be prepared to do a certain expectation, but you have to give them time to market.
Exactly. I agree. And it's interesting because people have asked, you know, well, how would it affect if you got a year or two-year delay? And I'm like, then we might actually be able to implement it in an appropriate timeline because right now, they're expecting what really is going to be the detriment of everyone, from the student to the teacher to the school system.
Mr. Clutter, I want to thank you for everything you've done for us today, as mind-boggling as it is. I appreciate you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Clutter, what time did you send us a file this morning?
It probably got six in the morning, but it was that Saturday or Sunday email that I thought you'd be really impressed with.
I gotta tell you, you know, I, when, anytime I send mine out at midnight and I think I'm doing good, I'll get a 3 o'clock one from you or something and, you know, you blow me away, so thank you.
Well, I gotta tell you, the people in this room are really the people that are bringing a lot of that.
Yes, they are.
So I thank them and I also thank our Ed Services team that does that. And so I appreciate the, my fellow presenters today. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes. All right, time for budget. Mr. Walker.
Go ahead, you can take a break.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
We'll, we'll take about a 10-minute break.